All right, good evening. I call this meeting to order. All the city councilors are present. And now I'll turn it over to Dr. Atkins and then Mr. Blair, if he has any comments before your team starts.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Torres?
Yes, good evening, thank you. I would like to call the Charlottesville City School Board to order. Today is January 28th and this is our work session with the city council to go over our budget. And I will turn it back to Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Ms. Torres. I thank you to our city council members and to our mayor and to all of our board members, welcome. What we'd like to do tonight is to present to our city council the recommendations that we have currently made to our school board for our FY22 funding request. After we present or even during the presentation, we invite any questions or clarification that we might give you on these recommendations. One of the areas that I'd like to bring everyone's attention to as we present the funding request for FY22 is that this budget will be built on one-time dollars, CARES dollars, that we are using in order to put in the recommended additional expenditures in this budget. So I will pause now and turn over the presentation to Kim Powell and to Renee Hoover. And I will be in between their presenting. So, Kim.
Good evening, everyone, our council members, Mayor Walker, our city colleagues, board members. So we're basically going to take you through the presentation that was the foundation of our discussion with the board at our last work session on January the 16th. But there are some updates and we'll be sure to highlight those. I believe I have the ability to share my screen, so I'll start doing that now.
And thank you also to our city manager, Mr. Blade. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is strange. It's not going it up, there we go, presentation mode. I hope everyone can see this okay because now I can't see any of you.
I can not see it.
No, you're not sharing.
All right, so let me back up because it says that I am. All right, share.
There you go.
Okay, thank you. All right, let me see if it'll go into presentation mode. There we go. All right, is that okay? Thanks. All right. So we're going to go over our priorities. We're going to talk about the revenue outlook. Dr. Atkins has already touched on that. And then I'll turn it back to Dr. Atkins to go through the details of the budget request, the changes, if you will, that are behind the budget as it now stands with what we're looking at. And then we'll wrap up with the summary and discuss next steps. This first slide just shows how our current fiscal year budget aligns with our strategic plan and the overarching goals of our strategic plan. And these are also connected with our equity goals, which are, you know, growing relationships, having supportive and supportive staff, and diverse, inclusive, and rigorous learning experiences. The three main priorities or the three priorities, the only things really we've been focused on going through this budget process are the need to recruit and retain highly qualified teachers and staff. Education is a people business, top to bottom. We're serving people with a lot of people. And then we also need to maintain the continuity of our high-quality instructional programs, maintaining is a big theme in this budget, and then applying a lens of equity in all of the decision-making that is behind this budget proposal. So the revenue outlook, this is just your typical pie chart that shows where the money comes from in our current budget. And you see very clearly that the city appropriation is the big driver of ultimately what we can or cannot do with our educational programs at 66%. I would tell you that the pie chart for every other locality in the Commonwealth looks much the same. And there's some charts in the appendix of this presentation from Jim Regenval, who's a consultant with BML, and he does a lot of analysis and tells the story about how over time all the burden for education has been shifted more and more away from the federal and state to the local level. Now, this year, we will have a little bit different story to tell with regard to federal funding because of CARES, but that is a temporary situation. Our overall enrollment outlook is we're expecting to recover about 65% of the enrollment loss that we experienced this year during the pandemic. This too is very similar to the situation a lot of other school divisions are in across the Commonwealth. We bring up enrollment in the revenue part of the presentation because enrollment is a big driver of our state revenues. You also will see in the later in the appendix, though, we are making adjustments or recommendations to adjust our staffing in response to having fewer students as well. So enrollment is a driver both on the revenue side, but also it's something that causes us each year to look at our expenses and see where we might need to make adjustments. But we are, at this time, projecting that we're going to recover about 65% of our students. And coincidentally or not, when we got the state budget information based on the governor's budget proposal, they build into that an enrollment projection for each locality. And the state's enrollment projection really align closely with our own projection models for where we think we would be next year. So speaking of state revenue, the governor's budget proposal has a couple of key highlights, the things we wanted to point out. It does include funding for a 2% bonus for all SOQ-funded positions. There's talk about this may be shifting from a bonus to being an actual funding that has to go towards a raise. And there's also been discussions in the General Assembly about perhaps increasing that. But we don't know until, you know, the process moves along and we see what actually comes out of the General Assembly. A critical component of the governor's budget proposal is something called no-loss funding or hold harmless funding, which means that despite the dip in the enrollment, they're essentially holding all the school divisions harmless and funding them based on enrollment levels of our last normal year, if you will, which was FY20. So when we look at the governor's proposal, what we essentially see would be level funding, level state funding for Charlottesville with an estimated increase of $32,781. So with the city revenue, of course, we're in a situation presently where we know the city is experiencing revenue shortfalls and uncertainties for the future. And we've also been notified that any increase in property tax revenues is expected to be offset by losses in meals and lodging taxes. So the recommendation, which Dr. Atkins already touched on, is that we would like to leverage CARES funding. We would in fact need to leverage CARES funding, which is, you know, not ongoing funding, but leverage our available CARES funding to both maintain valued programs and address our most pressing student needs, but leverage those funds in a way that also allows some time for the city to recover and stabilize revenues. And you'll see more about this as we go through the presentation. So what do our CARES money, what does our CARES money look like? We essentially, we received two, we're receiving two large allocations of CARES funds. The first allocation of CARES funds, what we call CARES 1, we actually received those dollars back in August. And you can see there where we're planning to use those funds. We had set money aside for family engagement and student support, transportation, and supplies. We would have had to go much deeper into this money in the current fiscal year, but there was another grant that came to us after CARES 1. And we refer to it as G.I.R.S., and forgive me, the words that go with that acronym escaped me, but it's Governor something, I think. Anyway, it was a smaller appropriation, but it came in and it was that money that had to be spent by the end of December, just the end of December of 2020. So what we were able to do is take some of the things we'd already done in CARES 1 and shift it into that smaller allocation that was very time-sensitive that had to be spent out very quickly. And I know the city dealt with a version of that whole, that same situation. But anyway, based on where we are now, our projection is that by the time we get to the end of this fiscal year, we'll have $842,000 remaining from CARES 1 to bring to bear in the next budget. We were recently notified, I think it was about two weeks ago. It was just before that Saturday work session on the 16th. So it was the week leading into that work session. We were notified of our, what we're calling our CARES 2 appropriation, which is almost 4.5 million. And so on this slide, you see the CARES, the balance we expect to have at the end of this year out of CARES 1. And then you see the CARES 2 appropriation.
Kim, may I ask a question? What is the difference between the restrictiveness of these dollars for schools versus what it is for local governments?
So the good news is, so that supplemental appropriation that I mentioned to you that came out that helped us save some of our CARES 1 money, that was very restrictive. You had to spend a certain amount on SED, a certain amount on supplies. It was very prescriptive. These monies, there's actually language in there that says something to the effect of you can use it to fill the gaps, that type of thing. So these monies are not as restrictive as federal funding typically is. So that's key. That's one of the reasons we can, you know, put forward the budget proposal that we're working on now is because of the relative lack of restriction. Now, there are timing, there are timing limits to spend it out.
That's what my next question was, thank you.
Okay, and Renee, if you could please unmute, I would like for you to speak to that because I know you're, I think I know the answer, but I want to make sure we get it right.
The CARES 1 funding expires on September 30th of 2022. And the CARES 2 funding expires on September 30th, 2023.
And again, that's critical to what you're going to see with this proposal and the way we think we can, you know, spread these funds out to help allow time for the city to recover revenues. Okay, so our budget changes and requests, again, here are the priorities. Recruit the staff, maintaining programs, and applying a lens of equity in all these important decisions. Just very briefly, before we get into the details of the request, we just want to remind everyone that you can see the details of our budget at any time. If you go to our website under Departments, and then you see Budget comes up on the left-hand side. And then we always post our presentations and everything as we go through this process. And then there's a Previous Years button that you can select. And you can see our current budget online as a PDF. And Renee Hoover has made a tremendous effort for us to start the process of getting the Meritorious Budget Award from the Association of School Business Officials. And we've already received the first step in that process. So, Dr. Atkins, at this point, I'll turn it back to you to discuss all the details.
Right, thank you, Kim. I appreciate that supplemental funding that Kim mentioned is called the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund. And we received that very restrictive in how we could use those dollars. The CARES 2 or the SRO 2 dollars, which is $4.4 million that we received most recently, that does give us the flexibility to use it to cover any shortfalls that we may have in our current budget or our budget moving forward. And again, the spend-out, there's a longer runway for the spend-out all the way through September 2023. As we started to develop this budget, we felt like we were certainly going to have to go in and make cuts rather than being able to adequately respond to the needs of our students relative to COVID. But once we were notified that the CARES 2 dollars would be provided, we were able to go in and look at now what do we truly need for our students as we transition back to a face-to-face model. So this budget represents the needs of our students and it absolutely speaks to the equitable distribution of the funds and distribution of the supports and resources and services for our students. So in the salary action, rather than offering the 2% bonus, we have factored in our budget a 2% salary increase for our teachers, that's a step plus 0.75. 2% also for our support staff, 1% plus a step. Our administrative staff, 1% plus a 0.75, and 2%, total of 2%. Our nurse pay scale, our nurse pay, we've done an analysis looking at the regional market in nurses, LPNs and RNs, and we need to align our scale to the regional market. And then head custodian pay. There's just a small differential between our regular custodians and head custodians in their pay. However, in the expectations and the responsibilities, there's a huge gap. So we are better aligning the pay scales to match the responsibilities of our head custodians. The total salary actions of those adjustments is $1,334,581. And then there's some non-discretionary contracts that we have factored in. Two insurance areas, the general liability property insurance, and then the workers' compensation insurance. Also, city contract pupil transportation, there's an increase in costs in that area. And the change that we've made since our September, our January 16th meeting is that we have added the city contract, the maintenance contract, which has to do with much of the mitigation that we have put in our buildings and maintaining that mitigation. So the total non-discretionary contract increases is $386,669. Now, the school-based program supports and improvements, which are focused on helping our students to bridge the gap between where they were when COVID hit. Any slide that has taken place and any needs that have emerged along with the needs that were already in place prior to COVID. So starting with the first one, the internet access for students. I am very pleased with where we are with access to the internet services. We, I don't want to say 100%, we have 99.9% of our students and our families having access to the internet. And we would like to, and we probably will be the first school division in the Commonwealth, to recommend that we make a line item in our budget that this access to remote internet access continue into our school year and this become a permanent line item in our budget so that our students and our families will not go without access to the internet, power school, and all of the resources that they need in order to be successful while they're at home. And at home, when we return face-to-face and they're doing the homework at home or they're working in the mornings before they leave to come to school. And then Zoom, we all know what Zoom is now. We need to continue with that platform, the remote learning instructional tool platform. It's useful. Even when we come back face-to-face, there is going to be a use for Zoom. Remind, many of our parents are familiar with Remind, it's a communication tool platform. It helps to keep our parents informed. It's a great tool for communicating between the schools and the community and our parents. Nusella is a literacy content platform for grades 7 through 12. Teachers and staff have been using this particular piece of software and would like to continue to use it. This one is a big one, the social workers. We know that when our students come back in, they will need supports. They will need social, emotional supports. Our families will need supports. So we are recommending that we put six and a half additional social workers in our school division. And that would be from pre-K all the way through 4th grade and LMA. We would place one social worker at each of our elementary schools and a 0.5 social worker at LMA. That would then smooth out our complement across the school division. And this is with current social workers, these new ones, and philanthropic episodes around social workers. It would give us one social worker at each elementary school, two social workers at Walker, three at Beaufort, and four at the high school, and a 0.5 at LMA. Instructional assistance, last year in the FY20 budget, we had social workers, but because of downturn in the economy and tax revenue, we had to take those out of the budget. We cut those last year. We would recommend restoring that one IA per second grade throughout our school division. That would be six additional IAs. We'd add an additional assistant principal at the high school, bringing their complement up to four, one per grade level. We would also add a reading specialist at Greenbrier. We would also add two star teachers. That's the structured teaching autism resource positions. And that would be one for Walker and one for Beaufort. We would add a math specialist to be housed at Charlottesville High School. The math specialists would not only work with students who are struggling with Algebra I, but also work with students who are going into honors, our non-traditional students going into honors, advanced placement, or any of our most rigorous coursework, giving them the support that they need to be successful. Fine arts, we would add one teacher at Beaufort for fine arts to give them more flexibility with the electives. This is the next one, partnership with Virginia State University. We're very pleased that we've entered into an agreement. And on Monday, this coming Monday, we actually will have a signing of students to enter into this program. It is called Students Training to be Teachers and Reaching Success. Students who enter this program with Virginia State University will be engaged in dual enrollment courses at the high school. When they have completed their 11th and 12th grade year, the complement of courses that are required for the program, they will receive the dual enrollment courses and admission to Virginia State University. And they grant funded tuition to go off to a four-year university. So we're pretty excited about this. And we have a number of students who have already indicated that they want to be a part of this program. Literacy specialists, we would add a 0.5 literacy specialist at LMA. Lead teacher stipends in grades K through 6. We have a number of teachers who already do this kind of work. We would then, like we do at the high school, offer them a stipend to continue to do the PLC work, professional learning community work, and being the lead on their grade level. Lead teacher stipends for our preschool program. Again, it follows the same thinking that the work is already going on. We've just never codified it by offering a stipend. Lead stipend for our ESL teacher, most of these stipends are around $1,500. Lead teacher stipends for special education. Our math specialists, additional 10 days on their contract, which would be equivalent to sometimes it's five days after the end of the school year or five days before the school year starts. And they would decide during the year how to use those 10 days. But it gives them more days for professional learning, also for offering workshops to our teachers and developing instructional materials. The addition that we have made is after working with Steph Tittle, and she worked with the reading specialist in the school division, we'd like to now add 10 additional contract days to seven of our reading specialist contract with the same type of caveat as the math specialist. Content squads, we'd offer a stipend. We currently have about 40 of our teachers and staff who work together to develop lessons and resource materials to put in what's called our Learning Management System Canvas. They've been doing that since COVID hit. They've done a phenomenal job. It has made it, it's one of the reasons that teachers feel supported in the virtual environment. We'd like to continue that work. The alignment is strong and the content is rigorous. So we would continue with the content squads and offering the stipend. And it would be approximately 40 staff members, teachers and staff. Substitute teachers, and whether it be a substitute coming in from the outside or one of our classroom teachers who would be substituting, we would offer an honorarium when they reach certain thresholds. For our teachers, when we ask them to give up their planning period to substitute, we would offer them a stipend. For our substitutes coming in from outside of the school division, when they have substituted 10 days or more at a school in a month, we would offer them an additional stipend. Our book rooms, we've been doing quite a bit of work on changing the narrative. And we really do, looking at equity, we need to update our book rooms. So K through 12, their book rooms would be updated. Materials and supplies for our K-12 science program during COVID, we've been mailing science supplies home to our students. It's been effective. We need to replenish those supplies and continue to provide for our students, whether with face-to-face or needing those materials at home to work. Musical instruments, as you know, the number of students who are taking orchestra and band at Walker increased significantly last year with a huge influx of more diverse population in orchestra and band. And when you add that many new instruments, you also add a cost for maintenance and payment. So that would cover that. Athletic trainer, at the high school, we have an athletic trainer. We're making a transition to a contract services with a new provider, and that will have an increase in the cost. So the total school-based program supports and improvement would be $1,854,119. And then school operations, we continue to provide the COVID mitigation supplies, like the mask, the hand sanitizer, the cleaning supplies. Reductions, because of the downturn in our enrollment, we keep very low pupil-teacher ratios, and we make an adjustment for our projected decrease in enrollment when compared to FY21 budget. So we would reduce four FTEs in our professional staff and one FTE in our support staff with a total of $372,874. Revenues, those were our expenses. The total general fund net expenses, $3,302,495. And then the revenues would be the state allocation that we anticipate from the governor's proposed budget, $32,781. And then a combination of the CARES 1 and 2 dollars would be $3,269,714. Our estimated request from the city would be level funding. So it would be no increase in funding, level funding for the FY22 budget, making net revenue $3,302,495. And Kim, I'm going to pitch it back over to you. Before I do that, I do want to again say that our thinking around this budget is that we are using CARES 1 and 2 dollars, which are one-time dollars. We are reserving some of the CARES 2 dollars so that during the FY23 budget, as we start to develop that, we would anticipate that we would be asking city council to consider funding us at least 50% of this one-time cost in FY23, and then the additional 50% in FY24. Also, add to that, we don't have any visibility right now what additional costs may be in FY23 budget. We're sure we would have salary increases. We're sure we'd have contract increases. So 50% of what the CARES 2 dollars, CARES 1 and 2 dollars would be is the base. And there is, in all likelihood, there would be additional requests above that 50% base in the FY23 budget. Kim?
So this slide just shows again the net of the CARES 1 and 2 funding that we're bringing to bear as we look at developing the FY22 budget. And then based on all those different budget changes that Dr. Atkins just went through, our projected available CARES budget that would be remaining to help for the FY23 budget would be $2,547,45. So again, we're trying to spread out the available CARES funding. Of course, we have to meet the spend-out deadlines for that money, so we can only spread it so much. And we also feel, and the whole community feels, a lot of pressing needs to address with our students. So that's the, that's the overall plan. So now we head into the summary and next steps.
I just want to clarify because I asked this in chat. When we say level funding, we're referring to basically level with what was requested last year. And what we granted last year, which was an increase from the formula, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then my other question, I'm sorry, is it all right? Is when we look at the changes that we've just gone through, Dr. Atkins, what proportion of these do you think are going to need to be sustained beyond the next two years, say? Just trying to understand. So for example, you mentioned like the social workers, I'll just take that as one example. Do you think that increase is something that once we even get beyond kind of ramping back in and we're in a more steady state environment post-COVID, that that's, as an example? I'm not saying, I'm just trying to understand when we look at all of these line items.
I would recommend that the social workers, many of these items would remain in place. And specifically, if we talk about the social workers, as we're starting to discuss transitioning from our SRO program at the high school, it's important that we take a long view. it's important that we take a long view of that transition. And that as we start moving to a more social, emotional um, basis of approaching our students and helping to support them and develop uh, them, that doesn't start at the high school. And that needs to be a program that we have in place, starting in the elementary school all the way up to the high school. And the social workers slash behavior specialist, psychologist, however we write up that description would be a um, important part of that entire process.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, was it, I wasn't trying to drive it around one, one line item, I was just, as an example, just trying to figure out, are there things on these lists that may not be sustained throughout that? But it seems like as you were talking through it, I was getting the impression that most of these things are things that the school system would wanna continue, with exception to just supplies and things that are very specific to COVID.
Correct, yes. Thank you.
And, and also just to clarify, the level funding is in reference to the current year allocation. So the current allocation for this year is what is built into this proposal for next year. So by way of wrapping up, um, the first thing that we just wanted to bring up again, because it's always good to remind ourselves that back in twenty-fourteen, um, the city's uh, Blue Ribbon Commission on Sustainable Schools Funding, uh, part of that report just put out there that it, it could be expected that it would need, that it would take between two and four million dollars a year in additional allocations to um, maintain or sustain the breadth and depth of programming that Charlottesville City Schools offers to this, um, to the students of this community. And so um, another piece of information that uh, we wanted to share, this is just something that we used in um, previous presentations, but there's a little more detail here um, to point everyone's attention to the comparative report of local government revenues and expenditures. This is um, also known as, we refer to it as the Auditor of Public Accounts Report. And it simply um, looks at how each locality, it's a comparative report that looks at how each uh, locality in the Commonwealth um, allocates its available resources. And the chart at the bottom just shows across the different governmental functions, the gray area shows the percent of available revenues devoted to each of those different areas. And the, um, and then it, it shows how that looks for Charlottesville, and this is um, for cities. This data is only looking at cities, it doesn't, this, this comparison is not based on a comparison with counties. And so the chart on the next page is one, we use this chart, we've shown this chart before, this is updated through twenty-nineteen. And again, the references are at the bottom of the slides, but there are only two areas in um, in which Charlottesville is below the um, state average as far as per capita or per citizen spend uh, in the different functional areas, and those two areas are public works and education. The zero line on this graph represents the statewide average for cities and how they allocate their available funds as far as the percentages that go into each of those um, functions. And so with that said, the city um, you know, provides generous support into a lot of programs that serve the citizens of this community. We, we know that and we know there are uh, funding challenges ahead because of the pandemic, new funding challenges ahead. So um, you know, from FY fifteen to FY twenty, the additional appropriations to schools have ranged between one point five million and three point eight million for an average annual increase of two point three million. That's the trajectory we've been on from twenty-fifteen to twenty-twenty. So we just, you know, thinking about that, thinking about the Blue Ribbon Commission report and acknowledging the fact that the city's funding is absolutely foundational and key for what the sc- city schools ultimately can or cannot do for the students of the community. COVID nineteen has definitely had significant and far-reaching impacts on our students and our staff. Um, emotionally, but for our students, the, the impact has certainly been emotionally, economically, and academically. Um, and again, staff has just been working harder than ever to address the challenges amidst all the other challenges we're facing. So this proposed budget leverages one-time, non-recurring CARES funds to address the most pressing needs now while still trying to, you know, while trying to build as much runway as we can for the city to recover revenues. Again, the CARES money does have deadlines to spend it out. Um, and any additional appropriation that the city can provide for FY twenty-two, if that were possible, would start the process of reducing the school's dependency on one-time funding.
So um, I have a question, um, just for clarification, um. So a few slides ago, you mentioned the um, there would be an expectation of an increase of fifty percent in FY twenty-three and fifty percent in twenty-four. Does that also include this estimated increase of the one point five million or more that you were just talking about, or?
I was referring to the one point five, uh, fifty percent of, of the uh, three million. Um, fifty percent of that would be about one point five that we would start with in the FY twenty-three as a need, as a request. And then um, that would be the carryover. And then we would have to ask for salary increases and, and the usual that comes each year with our staff.
So if um, if the tax revenue, because we are still having those conversations, decreased more and CARES funding didn't um, you had to make it stretch more than even you're attempting to make it stretch here, then there's a possibility that there, that need would have happened sooner.
Um. If we are able to hang on to the two million dollars in CARES, we already know we're going to tap into some of that during the school year. But if we could hang on to the vast majority of that, if in FY twenty, uh, the city is not able to start helping us to wind ourselves out with the use of this one-time funding, we would certainly uh, try to develop a budget in which we're using all of the CARES dollars that remain in order to take care of FY twenty-three, pushing us to FY twenty-four in order to reconcile the use of one-time dollars.
Mm-hmm. Okay. But even though we're seeing level funding, there is, what is that exact amount that if it wasn't for CARES dollars that?
That's the three, it's the three million, three, three point three million uh, that you see here. Uh, actually, the three point two, it's the three million two hundred sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars. If we, if we didn't have CARES funding available to us for next year, in order to achieve everything that was in this budget changes document, we would be asking the city for three million two hundred sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars.
More than was allocated to us for the FY twenty-one budget.
Right.
So, so um, yeah, and so that's what I'm trying to get my um, head around. So that three point two, that then becomes the base for future years. And then we are gonna have to, or to figure that out and then whatever the additional request.
Mayor Walker, you are absolutely right. Uh, each time we present a budget to you and, and with, with full transparency, each time we present a budget and there are increases that we're asking that city council provide, it's an increase for that projected year, that projected budget. But when we come back the following year, it, it lays the foundation for the base. And then there's a, could potentially be another increase on top of that uh, for the following year. And that's the way the cycle of the budgets roll over each year.
Ryan had a chart on that, I remember last year, that at some point it would be probably good to remind ourselves of. It shows like historically how that build has been happening.
Renee, if you get a chance, would you please pull out for us what um, the base funding is? The FY twenty-one base funding, what, what would?
Yes, and I'm, I'm just trying to make sure.
And especially the.
If, if you refer back to the word slide and the debt.
Thank you.
Right. That had the pie graph that right there, fifty-eight million seven hundred and nine thousand six hundred twenty-three dollars. That's, that's the city's appropriation for FY twenty-one.
And I know this is real, you know, sticky territory, especially with the conversation that started at the beginning, that everybody wants the, you know, the kids, we all want the kids to have what we need, but even some of the um, items here, we're not even sure yet what we'll, you know, be able to do with um, city staff. And I'm just looking at things like the pay increase, which is very important. But our staff members were not able to get a increase last year and they may not be able to get one this year. I mean, uh, you know, we are still at the very beginning stages of our hmm, budget, um, you know, meetings too. And so those are some, just some of the thoughts that I'm having of how we do this. Um, you know, last year, there was a total commitment to make sure that the schools were taken um, care of. And we did it in a way, I think that we didn't maybe do the same for um, city, you know, employees. So that's just something that we, that council will have to, you know, consider too.
And Mayor Walker, um, last year, we, um, our staff, our teachers did not get a salary increase. So we aligned with this uh, city in that respect last year. We took the salary increase out.
Yeah, okay, I didn't remember.
The only, the only, the increase last year was for non-discretionary cost increases. And um, we could go back to the presentations and find those, well, actually the budget document, that have them highlighted as well. But um, that, it was all for non-discretionary um, contract increases.
And we know also, city made cuts last year, um, the schools um, made also some cuts. We cut our Spanish program, we cut out instructional assistants at second grade. Uh, there were some significant cuts, we cut assistant principal at the high school. So there were a number of cuts and we took out the salary uh, increase adjustment for us, um, teachers and staff.
So that level funding right there that we just saw, was that the same, was that the amount after the various cuts were made? Or was that the amount before the various cuts were made?
That's the amount after the cuts.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't mean to leave that slide too soon. It's hard to know what, what you all wanna be looking at.
Uh, and I will remind the, the um, council that you, that, that actually was an increase over the previous year because of the uh, addition of the um, the gift, the teachers for gifted education and changing our model. City council appropriated to us funding to add an additional teacher for the gifted uh, at our elementary schools, so.
And was that from, was that additional to the five hundred thousand one-time dollars that had been appropriated the year before and then matched last year?
That was those dollars.
Okay, I just wanted to make clear that it wasn't, see which, which was which there.
Yes, and that was included now in the, the, the base for last year FY twenty-one, yes.
It just moved it from being what was viewed as a supplemental appropriation to being part of the ongoing appropriation, but it wasn't an increase for that.
So when we look at the, the, the chart that says Charlottesville is not paying as much as other cities are towards education?
If that's, um, to be clear, that's not at, in terms of absolute dollars, the, I actually was playing with this earlier today and I couldn't get it to look nice, so I gave up. But I had like a picture of a dollar bill and I was showing like how you had the dollar divided and, and you think of that as a citizen's dollar. And I had it a col- like different color bars and said like, this is how one locality takes their available dollars and they split it up um, across their um, you know, different government functions. And then right beside it, there was another dollar that had the same proportional splits, but it's a smaller dollar. Because not all localities have the same resources. So what this, all of this, both these details here and the chart here, it, it's just this, it, what it says is that for a given locality's available resources, their available funds, their available budget, this is the percentage that goes to each of the functions compared to the statewide average um, for the percentage that goes into each of the functions. So with the zero line is like average.
So the statewide average is more than sixty-six percent of their budget goes to education?
Right, the statewide average, actually, it's, it's um, it's forty-six percent of available resources. So maybe this, so the chart on this page right here is a graph of this column, percent of average.
Okay, but if sixty-six percent of our budget is going towards education, according to that pie chart?
No, that's um, that's sixty-six percent of, that's not your budget, that's our revenue sources. So sixty, sixty-six percent of our funding comes from the city. And this is a, like, we don't, the, these are the different government functions for purposes of the Auditor of Public, Public Accounts. And Ryan or anyone else on the call from city staff might wanna chime in here because it's, this is from the um, the required filings of, from all the localities to the state, they capture this information. And what this says is that for all cities in Virginia, the average is to spend five percent of their budget, if you will, five percent of the uh, revenue per capita, five percent of revenue per, per capita, per citizen on general government. And then this is the Charlottesville number. And you can see at the bottom, and my share screen thing is in my way, but the statewide, the average per capita revenue, so per citizen revenue going into the city is three thousand nine thirty-three. Charlottesville has a bigger pie, if you will, they're above the average as far as revenue generated per capita. The way this, the way the APA report reads. And the link at the bottom actually will take you to the report. And when this, all of our presentations get posted on that budget page, so if you wanna hit the link, it takes you right to this um, comparative report, when you, you download it, it's called, the, it's called Cost Nineteen File. And Exhibit C is the tab to look at for the city's comparisons. There's tabs for county and all kinds of tabs and that thing, we look at, when we look at it. But that's, that's what this is. And so it just shows that from cities across Virginia for twenty-nineteen, on average, they, they allocate forty-six percent of their available funds, their per, per capita revenue to education. And Charlottesville is third, was at thirty-four percent for twenty-nineteen.
This is different than you said, the absolute dollars that we do allocate.
Absolute doll, this doesn't reflect absolute dollars. This is a relative comparison of the percentage of the available dollars that gets allocated into each government function.
Do you have a sense for what we, where we stack up when we talk about absolute dollars?
Well, you could look here, um, on a per, on a per capita or per citizen basis.
So I mean, I mean per student, I'm sorry, I'm thinking about per student.
Per pupil. So Charlottesville's per pupil um, spend is, is, is on the higher side for the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that's driven by a number of factors. Mainly, the main factor is the um, the breadth and depth of programs that we offer for the size of our school division. That's, that's a huge driver. Another driver is um, how we're configured, honestly, with um, the six small, you know, community-based elementary schools. This decisions that have been made about our configuration. Um, those things drive costs, the breadth and depth of programs compared, in comparison to the number of students that we're serving drives cost. I've often said Charlottesville plays very big as far as STEM offering spine art, offerings, offerings, et cetera, for a school division of our size. A lot of school divisions, if not most school divisions in the Commonwealth that have the same type of student population that we have, the same number of students, they are not necessarily offering that same breadth and depth of programming. The other thing is, there's something called, um, just in general, the um, and this gets to the breadth and depth thing, but how we uh, staff our programs for students in comparison to the state um, standards of quality, which are, it's not anything about quality, but it's the funding formula that defines the minimum that um, you know, needs to be done to educate the students of a locality. Every um, locality in the state of Virginia funds their education programs well, well above the SOQs. But again, the breadth and depth of the programs in Charlottesville, we're, we're in the very top echelon of, of as far as how we operate, providing services beyond the SOQ for students.
Um, this is Chrissy Hamel from the City Budget Office. I just wanted to pop in here um, just for a little bit of clarification on this APA report. So um, the intent on this APA report is to So um the intent on this APA report is to do just what you described, to create a comparison. Um and to look at localities, there's a, a specified format in what you do this. Um, all intents with this report are great. The problem is, is that it doesn't often compare apples to apples. Um, so it asks for information in which we're reporting now by categories like general government, public safety, education in this case. But for example, not every locality has the same reporting requirements in terms of how they fund their schools. So for example, Alamo County, their schools are part of their general fund. Whereas our general fund for education only includes our contribution. So one locality's percentage could be a little bit higher than what ours would be. Because it includes all of your school salaries and the full complement of the school budget. So some, you know, while the overall intent of this report is really good, sometimes it's important to, you know, get in the weeds a little bit. On the percentages and so it's not always apples to apples.
You know, Chrissy, that's a challenge with so many of the reports that we look at from the state. Uh so I don't, I don't just, I'm glad you um commented on that. I would say Alamo County is not in this report because this is just looking at cities. And the main thing is just going to that link because it's really intended to be a, a citizen's report. Um something that is available to um, of course, to those of us who work in government, but also for the citizens. So just get in there and, and snoop around. Um but Chrissy makes a valid point and we run into the same thing sometimes with other filings we do with VDOE. Um namely, our annual school report has some of the same challenges. So you're right, you don't all operate exactly the same way. So that can lead to some uh apples and not so apples comparisons. But I, it is, it's an interesting report. I encourage anyone who's in, who has an interest in this to check out the link. Because it does have some value, for sure.
Echo that while it's useful, you know, it's definitely something we can't make uh sweeping conclusions from by any means. But um. Two questions, one is, you know, on the line items of uh new expenditures compared to last year's budget. Um, you know, I know there's a lot of different priorities and COVID has shifted priorities. Um, but I think, you know, one of the biggest one continues to be um the achievement gap and that connection to equity. And uh, you know, as one way of meeting that achievement gap, the importance of trying to get uh literacy and numeracy on par. And the interventions, particularly in K through three, early on, to begin those interventions, to try to reduce the achievement gap there. How many of the new expended, wh- what of those positions address um that need for inter- intervention? In literacy and numeracy um interventions at that K through three level? And is there any sense about what the total dollar amount necessary is? To have enough resources in our school system to have that intervention for every student identified through pals or other, other means. Who have fallen behind on literacy and numeracy. Um basically, so. Counsel, you know, can get a sense of um how much money is needed to cover all the need there and fully make that intervention to try to reduce the achievement gap.
Mr. Payne, I think that's a great question. And, and so I'm going to start with my answer is that. When we start looking at the achievement gap, we also have to look at the opportunity gap uh that exists with our students. They go hand in hand. And as we are addressing the opportunity gap, that feeds the achievement gap. Uh that we see in students uh prior to them coming to school, when they enter school. And then it continues with some of our students uh during their elementary and into their middle school years. Um, in this particular budget, we do have some very specific positions for literacy and for mathematics. But I would contend that all of these positions um that deal with support staff are a part of addressing that opportunity gap. Students um have to have the opportunity to access curriculum, opportunity to have um rigorous curriculum. And opportunity to engage in that rig- uh rigorous curriculum. Uh a good example is the internet access. It does not have the word literacy nor mathematics behind, beside it. But it is an opportunity gap that exists in our community and across the Commonwealth. And actually, COVID has amplified that across the nation. Uh having access to the internet to do homework, for our families to be able to access power school, communicate with teachers. To stay abreast of what's happening with their student is an important and vital part of the success of the student um in, in schools. Um so each of these uh play a role in making sure that we diminish the gap in opportunity. And amplify the um opportunity to engage in rigorous literacy and mathematics. So, and we can certainly give you how much we, how many math specialists and how many reading specialists that we have. But that's a very narrow look at a student. Um over the weekend, I heard that the University of Virginia. Uh is starting to move away from using one test measure like the SAT. In order to determine a student's qualification for coming to the university. And I think that's a huge step forward and a huge step, the, the um, a huge statement that the university is making. For students who are coming to their university, they're about more than one test score. I contend that our students in our school system are about more than one test score. And what our teachers and our staff do with the students is about more than one test score. It's about the whole stu- student and this represents the whole child and our approach to provide for those needs.
The other question is um, you know, I'm, I'm sure this, the school board is also. Uh gotten communications about it, but um cultivate Charlottesville and other community groups have, have put forward requests for, I think. Hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of funding over um at least five years for additional supports for. School nutrition and school meals. I know on, on city council and, you know, our allocation of CARES Act money in response to the pandemic. Food justice and food security was definitely right up there as one of the most emergency, immediate needs. Has there yet been any discussion or sense of um uh the ability to include that in the budget? And what specifically that hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars might be able to accomplish in order um related to. Uh food security and improving nutrition um within the school system and our community?
I apologize. Um, so you're asking about their, their request and how it relates to addressing um the feeding in the community?
Well, I got, uh, I, I just, I just don't know if that's something the school board has yet discussed, if that's a priority to incorporate into the budget requests this year. And if there's a sense of um what specifically that hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars would go to, maybe more question for cultivate Charlottesville, but.
I, I think it, at this time, it would be a question more specifically for them. The, the board as a entity I, I know has not had a chance to discuss it because um, well, we just got an email this week, I believe. Um, I really don't know that I could answer that, that question. Um we're, as far as what they were asking about in the message that I saw. I'm not a hundred percent sure at this time how that, what exactly that, how that would connect with our, like our school nutrition program. Um the details, at a detailed level, I'm not quite sure, not a hundred percent sure.
Well, no, it totally makes sense. Um it's, it's just something I'm definitely curious to, to learn more about and hear the perspective of the. The board as well as more perspective from cultivate Charlottesville and some of the groups making that ask of exactly what that may be able to accomplish. And if um, you know, how it could become a priority this budget cycle. Um, I guess the, the final thought I had just about the, the, the um, the achievement gap is definitely, and I think everyone shares this. You know, something I've just, you know, we had that chart on um. Um, average expenditures per city, but I know per pupil. Um, you know, Charlottesville city schools have, you know, are, are very high up there um statewide and have been for a number of years. And yet we haven't been able to have success on reducing the achievement gap. And I know there's a lot of new programs that are just getting started and, you know, we've got to give those a chance to grow and get started and measure the, the impact on. The achievement gap, uh there may be there as well as um, you know, also think about it as being beyond just one test score. Um, but you know, it just continues to be a, a concern of mine, as I'm sure it is for the board and everyone, just what interventions are going to be most successful. At actually um reducing the opportunity achievement gap. And just for, at least speaking individually, you know, if, if interventions in tutoring and more direct interventions. Particularly at that K, K through three level, um could be one avenue towards getting there. Um not just in terms of test scores, but in terms of just the ability to have strong literacy and numeracy and that opportunity. And just what dollar amount that may take and um, and just more generally, how much money is needed from the city towards what specific interventions? Um that are going to be able to have measurable positive impacts. Um because clearly in the past, um despite our huge per pupil investment. We just haven't been able to, to get where we need to be yet.
I think that, that, that those are legitimate uh areas to discuss. One of the areas of success that we have had and continue to have is our graduation rate. Uh we were taking a look at that today. Um we have a ninety-four percent, ninety-four point five, um around about. Percentage graduation rate at our high school. But in that graduation rate, when we take a closer look at those demographics and students graduating. Ninety-six percent of our black students, our African-American students graduate from high school in Charlottesville city. Um, and I, I don't know that there are too many people who would call that not a success. So we, we are having enormous amount of success with our black students. And we need to say to our black students that they are having success in our school division. Um literacy and mathematics are important components of the success of a student at all levels of their education. And it is a process, it's not an event. And we can bring in students who are struggling when they come into our school system. And then graduate students at the rate that we are graduating them, is something that our teachers are doing that's pretty magical. Uh with our students all along the way. I think that's one of the measures of success. Whether we're talking about African-American students or Caucasian students or uh our um Hispanic students, all ethnicities. One of the measures of their success is graduating from high school and continuing to pre- uh pursue post-secondary education. And we have seen, we've gone from an eighteen percent dropout rate in Charlottesville city down to a one percent dropout rate. We've gone from without African-American students, um somewhere in, in sixty-six to sixty-nine percent. Graduation rate with our African-American students now to realize with all of the great work that Eric Erezere and his team. They're doing at the high school and all of our levels to a ninety-six percent graduation rate. So at literacy is incredibly important, an important part. But I don't want us to tell a story about our students based on one measure and based on one grade level. Our students need to hear that they are successful, that they have potential, and our students need to know that we believe in them. And that we will not measure them by one grade level and the score that they make on one test. Um, so we want to keep moving forward with the literacy and supporting our students with literacy and mathematics. Um, but also to celebrate what they have done with a phenomenal graduation rate.
Certainly, yeah, and I, you know, um, you know, I don't mean it purely as a criticism and clearly across the entire country. Um, you know, every school district is struggling with these same things and there's no silver bullets or easy answer. But I know for myself, as I know it is for the board and everyone, just trying to figure out um to measure what, what's the most bang for our buck? And the most powerful and useful interventions. Um, but thank you and that's all I have uh at this moment.
Um, I have a question on, I guess, next year. If we are looking. At what approximately? One point five million, one point eight million next year? Being needed to be added and then in two years, three point one million? Needed to be added to the budget? Is that cur- is that?
But that would depend. Um if, if the council and the board um want to follow the pathway. That, that we are trying to lay out, uh we would recommend, but it could happen um in different percentages. We would recommend trying to recoup in our FY twenty-three budget at, at fifty percent of the three million. And then in the FY twenty-four, the additional fifty percent. So each year it would be the one point five, not um one point five. And then another um three million the following year, but each year one point five.
Three million versus where we are today?
Correct, by FY twenty-four.
And that's assuming that our economy has recovered enough by then to support that.
Correct, correct.
Um, and we should, okay.
So when that is going to be presented next year in the budget, will it be pres- I mean. Would it be presented as? An increase? Or? I'm assuming that it will be asking for an increase then next year. Not as being part of already, because we haven't given it yet. So next year it would be asked as a one point five million dollar increase to the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the way it'll be reflected, the way you would see it, is that in this, on our changes document. In time, we would show a decrease in federal funding, like some years, there are years where the state line. Because the local composite index of ability to pay or some other factors change. Like if, if the state line here were a negative number, then the, that impacts the bottom line um request to the city. So when, as one-time dollars go away, to the extent they're supporting ongoing initiatives that the um, the board and community want to continue. Then that's how that ends up being presented. So you would see that actually coming up as a negative number.
Okay, so it will be presented as a new ask, not as a hold from this year.
Right, it would end up, when you, when you have a, a, when we have a negative revenue adjustment, a negative change in revenue from another source. When we go through our changes, when we step the board and community through the changes, um it ends up filtering down to, you know, impact the city request. Yes.
And, but we could, we should probably also anticipate, you know, every year when we look at these, there are this summary of changes. Um that what you're talking about with um councillor McGill is just to basically say that ho- holding steady all the services and resources that we're committing to. But there likely be more, one, there might be another salary increase. And there may be other things that percolate up that, you know. The school system is, is seeking additional resources for. So I think that, are we to consider this as like a floor from which there might be more that's built upon?
Ms. Hill, we could have additional revenue from um real estate. Uh we could have in the governor's budget, there's a great deal of discussion going on now at the general assembly. Um, putting forth a vision for the future for public education and how the state might better fund public education. So I think there's some synergy around that discussion. And uh if that moves forward, it could very well affect. The request for FY twenty-three and beyond.
So if real estate rebounds and significantly increases in the tax dollars coming in from real estate. Would that be considered at kind of chipping away at some of this? Or is this on top of any additional real estate dollars of the forty percent that we automatically send over?
This.
We're not automatically being sent over forty percent this year. I just want to make that note. And I don't think we did last year either. So in automatic forty percent seems ambitious at this moment. Given that it hasn't happened for two years. Um but.
Okay.
Check me on last year though. Um, the, the, that this would be, i- is that accurate, Dr. Atkins?
Typically, they fund us at higher, the, the forty percent of property has always been a, of the property increase is always been just. A starting point for discussions, Dr. Atkins, I'm sorry, I can see now.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Kim.
Okay, well, anyway. Um, but yeah, the forty percent of new property uh revenues just was a, a longstanding starting point for the. But yeah, the forty percent of new property revenues just was a longstanding starting point for the conversation. The meals and lodging taxes have also played a big role in what the city has been able to do as far as funding education.
But was that something that we received last year?
I I believe the increase that we received last year was likely above that, but I would have to double check. Chris, I don't know if Chrissy or Ryan could comment on that, if you all know off the top of your head, what forty percent property increase was last year?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I do believe it was above the forty percent. I would have to, I was looking for the chart while you guys were talking, hoping to be able to find it before it was asked, but I do believe it was it was above.
Okay, thank you. So this year we're not asking for the forty percent. We're asking, we're going to have the forty, what is a typical forty percent request, which is between two and four million dollars annually. We're going to use this one time funding. And so what we're asking is we're reserving two million dollars of that so that we can, over the course of the two, next two years, is to find some other funding source besides this one fun, one time funding source. And what Dr. Atkins just mentioned was that we might have this, the state funding formula change. Certainly, the federal government continues to talk about additional relief. So those are the, that's, so I feel like that the forty percent isn't even part of this calculation for this year's budget, but certainly a starting point, which would also include the CARES money next year as well.
Just to clarify, new revenue. I'll ask our budget team this, like when we think about that, that formulation, it's additional new revenue. Like obviously, right now, we're having a significant revenue shortfall. So even if like there's properties out there that are new to our calculations of revenue that it's been offset by far with a shortfall in revenues. And so I'm just, I guess, from the real estate standpoint alone, I'd be curious, I just want to get a little more clarification on how that that all gets calculated. Am I making sense, Ryan or Chrissy?
Yeah. So I'm just trying, so the policy as it as it stated is forty percent of additional real estate and personal property tax revenue. However, you know, typically that is followed by an increase in the overall revenue. This is a unique year where there may be increases there, where the rest of the revenue decreases. This is all stuff we'll be discussing further with council on at our work session on the third. It's one of the topics we we did have to for further discussion.
And and while we're on the topic of revenue, I was texting with Chrissy and I really appreciate her help to run this down because on those comparative reports, the comparative report, the example that was given about like Albemarle, for example, even though Albemarle is not part of any of the data that I showed, because it was just data, data relevant to cities. It isn't uncommon, and she's right, that when local government and schools have what what's called a joint operations component, like like Albemarle does with their payroll is covers, you know, the payroll department and certain other things are what they call joint operations. And therefore, those educational expenses roll into that, potentially roll into that general government line. That would actually, that would make things look less favorable for education, right? Because you have a lot of services being provided from by the general government for the schools for education. And so they, those expenditures and Albemarle that are under their joint operations may not show up in their education function, for example. We don't have those type of joint operations that would make the education spend look less favorable. But I've asked Chrissy to help me figure out how those contracts end up flowing through to the APA report, because we do have those, the contract arrangements. And if the city isn't getting credit for the transportation, invest, you know, the dollars they give us for transportation and maintenance somehow, because of the way that money goes back and forth, that could be an example of what she's talking about. So I just wanted to follow that up since we were talking about revenue and all that good stuff. But anyway, learn something new every day, we'll see.
And speaking of revenue again, if we find ourselves in a position that we can't, that we're going to be taking a reduction in our budget, would you all just be going further into your CARES funding to make up those gaps?
I think that would be a discussion that we would have with the board. Take a look at the recommendations here, the proposed budget. What revenue would be CARES dollars will remain and how we might want to allocate those dollars towards this budget. So I'd certainly want to have that discussion with the board.
I know that all of the discussion at this point has been about operating budget and so on. But as I'm thinking about our budgeting process that we will be going through in the next month or two, I wonder if you have any light that you can shed for us on capital expenditures, in particular where you stand with decision making on the reconfiguration and that whole problem.
Mr. Snook, are you asking me?
I'm asking anybody who is listening.
Okay.
I don't know who the right person to ask is, all I know is I don't know.
I think I would pitch that question to the city and to council. Our board has taken action on the recommendation for the reconfiguration. And now the discussion is with council on how to move that project forward or if that project will move forward.
Okay, I have not seen anything that would seem to be a suggestion of how much money you all think you want or when you want it, or how you're, what you're going to spend it on. Is that something that is lurking in the bowels of City Hall that has not been divulged to us?
For capital stuff in general or specifically reconfiguration?
Specifically reconfiguration. That's, that's the thing that if as we look at the next five years of city financial planning, that's the elephant in the room.
Well, what we're waiting for is the consultants that have been hired, I'm assuming that's underway now, or the architecture firm is going to be doing that first pass, which we have already allocated the CIP dollars for. And then that will, at the end of that assessment, will provide us with a much more clearer picture of how much the proposed reconfiguration would cost and what options that the city and the schools would have. And right now, council has committed that fifty million dollar figure out in the future, waiting for that information. But I think until we have the information, I think it's almost impossible for those of us in the virtual room right now to to assess dollars beyond that. We've, we've said that we want to commit that amount of money, knowing that regardless of reconfiguration, that the city schools are going to need significant capital investment.
I guess my question, I wasn't looking for specifics, though you frankly gave a more detailed answer than I have previously heard. But I really kind of like to know, even if it's only a rough idea, do we expect that we're going to have a a plan worked out a year from now that would begin to be implemented two years from now? We've got, we have placeholders in our capital budget. But of course, it's, they're only placeholders at this point, and I don't know. I don't know how to begin to figure out how to balance our competing capital need.
So I think
over the next five years without having more detail. So if that's not a discussion to be having at the moment, we'll have to have it some other time.
So we should have a better understanding of what those numbers look like, which we know will likely exceed the fifty million dollars that we've been discussing by the summer. At that point, I think what you are probably thinking is, you know, a thought that we all should be having, how do we continue with the annual increases in the academic programs? And then also either build new schools or do significant modifications. And I, it's hard to look at those two things in isolation.
Right.
And so, but we won't have those figures until the firm comes back and let us know exactly what those are. But the fifty million that we've been talking about during some of our budget discussions and the conversations around those big projects that we are considering or, you know, no, will possibly no longer consider. We won't have the that exact, those dollars amounts until we get the information back. And I don't know.
So the bottom, the bottom line for us in our budgeting discussions in the next two months is that those numbers will continue to be placeholders.
Yes.
Okay.
I think that we should wrap our head around the fact that fifty million is is probably not going to be sufficient based on some of the estimates that we have in the past. So then we're to do the, you know, major projects or whether we are going to start just saying this is the amount of money and what do you see best, you know, as the best use for it.
Incredible, I think we kind of backed into that number, just understanding like our debt ceilings, like our capacity for for taking out debt.
I understand, which is why I think we have to consider it every time we do any increase anywhere. Because going to at some point come down to us either being able to say yes to projects or having to say no. And even this major one with the schools that we all acknowledge that we need repairs to all of our schools.
Can I just ask if we are in negotiations with a selected design firm or are we selected one? And what is the timeline for getting this going? Because we understand, I appreciate the, at least the placeholder there for sure. But we, you know, all of the specifics that Mr. Snook has identified are certainly something, you know, things that we, questions that we get every day as well, so.
Yeah, so the firm has been selected.
Okay, and so what is, I, I have we contracted with them and are we, and what is the timeline for that?
Mr. Blair, do you have an update there?
I can speak with Ms. Grooms and get that to the council and school board. I'd be happy to email that to you. I know they were in negotiations, but I'm not certain if the contract has been executed yet.
Thank you.
And I I would definitely encourage the public to stay engaged throughout the upcoming budget work sessions, particularly those related to our capital budget, because we've had some initial discussions and I think there are some pretty tough realities, especially in light of the pandemic's impact on our revenues that we're going to have to confront in our capital budget in terms of our ability to pay for debt payments for everything that is in our CIP right now. I know at our last work session, you know, we could completely eliminate the West Main Street streetscape project and still need to be looking at significant cuts and reprioritizations within our CIP and general fund in order to be able to handle the amount of debt that's going to be coming on. And we, and we know that, you know, school reconfiguration, we don't know the number, but it certainly wouldn't be inconceivable that it could be double fifty million. So I definitely think that's something council is going to need to just take on brutally, with brutal honesty about what we are going to prioritize in our CIP. Which brings to another capital budget question. I don't know if it's a question for the schools or the city is. There are obviously a lot of capital expenditures that are going to be necessary to, you know, handle the pandemic in terms of air filters and other changes within school buildings and government buildings. Is that something that there's a feeling on that that that's fully supported at this point? Or would there be additional support needed from the city in order to cover some of that infrastructure, just to handle basic updates related to the pandemic?
Great, great. That's a great question. I think Kim has gotten to that. Kim, you want to give an explanation?
I can explain this, yes. So when we receive the details for the city maintenance, the proposed increase to our city contract for maintenance services, the, there's, you know, a lot of pluses and minuses, but this two hundred and twenty six thousand dollar increase that's highlighted here is really in the net of it all driven by two things. One, a hundred and seventy some thousand dollars projected utility cost increase to operate all this additional equipment that's doing the air filtration, the HEPA filtration units, the bipolar ionization units and the UVC lighting equipment that's going in. The city maintenance and utilities team got together and did some projections around that. And then the balance of that increase is really driven by the increased cost of the filter maintenance on all these different pieces of equipment. So that line is addressing the question you're asking, I believe.
And, and okay, so that would cover the
ongoing, because I think the general thinking is, and especially looking at this virus and how it's evolving and different things, I mean, none of us want to go through this pandemic, but the air quality, indoor air quality measures that have been implemented are certainly things you want to maintain, they can do. So those are, and there's also the filters replacements for the new bottle fill stations, because we had to eliminate like water fountains, the old style that you push the button and put your mouth near. We had some bottle fill stations already. We were working through the process of swapping out those about the old style fountains with bottle fillers. We were doing it more gradually through a combination of our partnership with maintenance and also some private donors. We've been able to bring CARES money to bear to get all the bottle fill stations in now. So there's filters associated with that, too.
And so those CARES dollars aren't reflective here, because those were early on in the process, right? When you were applying them to these more mechanical needs.
Oh, so the purchase of that equipment has been born, was actually ended up being born out of a large portion of it is from the CARES money that the city received on that tight deadline to spend.
That was early, late November, we had a section of that CARES money was going to school filters.
Not all of it, but a lot of it. We had to buy some of that other gears, gears money that I mentioned. We, we had to buy some HEPA filtration units and things early on. And we've supplemented it, but the majority of it has been the initiatives under facilities maintenance that have been for city and school buildings. And it helped, it actually, those things helped the city meet the spend out deadline in the, with, with the allowable uses and the allowable timeframe. The only other slide we have in the deck, there's an appendix to this with supplemental information from Jim Regan Ball and our student enrollment predictions and all that stuff's in the appendix, but just the last slide is just the upcoming dates. That, so you can see how the process continues for, for the school board.
So we'll continue to work with our board and continue to receive input and then present. The Charlottesville City School Board will take action on the budget in February and February eighteen. And after they take action on the budget, then we will be presenting at your city council meeting, March the first, and giving you the opportunity then to weigh in and, and take action in April if you so decide.
If I may, just one final comment to reiterate, I definitely would be curious to as a council and with the school board, you know, discuss more some of that request for a hundred twenty five thousand dollars for school nutrition support and just you know, have a little bit of discussion of what that could look like, the feasibility as well as what kind of impact that could have. But just speaking individually, I'd definitely be interested in pursuing that further.
Counselor Payne, I wanted to thank you for raising that and want to acknowledge and just extend my appreciation for everything that Cultivate Charlottesville, Food Justice Network, all of those partners have done for the community, for our students. But we really did just get this request probably two days ago. And so speaking for myself, I have a lot of questions and I need some more information. So I have asked to get some more information and to have some time, because I would, I'd like to understand all of the intricacies of the relationships and the grants that have been received already, how that plays out and how it's, it's touched our students and our schools. And and to allow some more time to have our entire board have that discussion. So thank you for bringing that forward.
Hundred percent, and I would say I think I'm in the exact same place, just curious to know more and begin the conversation, but thank you.
I feel like it's worth noting that we, the school division, if, you know, provides lunch and breakfast to families, any family who needs it. that we, um, the school division, uh, if, uh, you know, uh, uh, provides lunch and breakfast to families, any family who needs it, um, whenever, on a school day. Um, so I, and I think it's one of the highlights of the things that we've been able to accomplish over the course of the pandemic is just maintaining the food distribution that we have, um, across our city. So just want to acknowledge our nutrition services for that really hard work. Um, and it's not just like low income, like it's not, um, there's no applications. If you need food or if you, your family needs food for breakfast and lunches, it's a pretty easy phone call every day to the, um, some, you know, distribution sites. And, uh, you can get your, your family, your students, uh, some, some breakfast and lunch. So FYI.
And I'd just like to remind, um, that any increase is likely to, um, translate into additional requests from us. And, um, so that's one thing to keep in mind. I haven't read this proposal yet, so I don't know exactly what they're asking. And, um, then during our budget meetings, we need to have the discussion because I think we're in the second year of the increase in funding to match the grant. That we, was it a hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
One hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for the food equity initiatives. Um, and this is actually FY twenty-two would be the third year of that. We're currently in the second year of FY twenty-one.
That's an annual number.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm not an expert in that. Kaki's the, the expert in that. I mean, I believe it was initially, um, presented to us as a three-year match.
Yeah.
But I don't know if that, that it's work is since being continued. I said, I would have to defer to.
And I, I would just mean that that, that figure is on an annual basis.
Correct.
An aggregate.
Yeah, I was clarifying. Sorry.
Thousand dollars per year. Yes.
Yeah.
I will also add that the, um, the school's budget, we transfer about forty-five thousand dollars, uh, each year to the Charlottesville School Yard Garden. So we are already participating in, in supporting that program.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that we are keeping all of that, um, in mind when we talk about additional, um, hundred and twenty-five thousand. But I do have to read that myself to figure out what, um, they are requesting.
Can I ask a couple of questions relating to, uh, the projection that sixty-five percent of the, the folks who have fallen away from the school system will return? First of all, how, by what, by what number are we down in our enrollment this, this school year as opposed to uh, last year at this time?
Two hundred and fifty-eight students based on the fall enrollment report. Well, comparing, comparing our official fall submission to VDOE with our official end of last school year, two hundred and fifty-eight.
Do we have a sense of where those students have gone? Are they simply homeschooling or essentially dropping out for a year? Are they going to private schools or what's happening?
Uh, private is so anecdotally because they have no obligation to tell us where they're going, but anecdotally we can say, of quite a few families, particularly elementary. Because where, that's where we see, we saw most of the loss. So families with the younger students, um, if, if they had a private option available to them, we do know quite a few families did that. Because private schools, a lot of them, you know, from the start were, um, saying that they were going to continue face-to-face options. Of course, they're dealing with a much smaller population of students to serve.
We also know that at our kindergarten level, there are a number of our families who have opted to, uh, not allow their student to come in this year in the kindergarten, at the kindergarten level. So it's not just in Charlottesville across the Commonwealth. We're seeing many of our families holding your student out at the kindergarten level.
Delaying the start. That's a good point, Dr. Atkins. I forgot, but that was talked about quite a bit in the fall.
And enough homeschool students, uh, for this year.
So if we're down two hundred and fifty-eight and we're expecting sixty-five percent of them to come back, that's roughly a hundred and sixty. So we would still expect to be down about a hundred from, let's say, a year ago for the next year.
That's correct, but we, and we could recover more than sixty-five percent.
Sure.
Wanted to be conservative on the number that we would recover. Uh, we received emails from our families saying, I'm coming back, but this year because of COVID, I'm exercising some other options, uh, but I look forward to coming back next year. So we think we will be able to recover at least that sixty-five percent and perhaps more.
How sensitive is your budget to, to that number as if, if instead of sixty-five percent, fifty percent come back, what does that do to your budget?
Well, we have, uh, factored in the budget two open positions, meaning that we have two unallocated positions in our budget. So if, and, and that equates to about forty students, forty to forty-five students at the elementary school level. So if, uh, we, the projection, uh, goes lower, um, lower than that sixty-five percent, then we pour on the revenue for those two open positions. If the percentage increases and we have more students that are coming in, we would again use those two open positions to hire. Uh, or we would use those two open positions not to hire and to reduce the budget.
And for every student who does not come back, what does that cost you all?
And then like, Kim Powell.
Do you have our, Renee, do you have our per pupil, uh, from the state, our, our latest? I can't remember the last time I updated it. Or just the ballpark.
Off the top of my head, it's five or six thousand dollars per student.
Thank you.
Actually, I think it might be lower. Okay.
That's all I got.
Are there any other questions? I just wanted to say that we, we appreciate, um, meeting with you all today and, and taking your questions. And I did want to reiterate, um, you know, that this entire budget, that, you know, our, uh, Dr. Atkins and her, her staff worked really, really hard, um, building this entire budget around equity. Um, but again, with that one-time funding, and I know you've heard that a couple of times. So, um, we appreciate you being sensitive to that. Um, I personally, um, you know, uh, hope that we can continue to receive your questions, but also get a sense, um, from you all as soon as you know. And I know you have a lot of work to do on your end of things. You know, as far as the level of funding or, or if that might look different so that we can, um, adjust our budget accordingly. Also just wanted to share, um, you know, and, and to, to Counselor Payne's point about, um, the amount of spending per pupil, um, you know, our, our investments in our students, not just this year, but historically throughout the years have really reflected and mirrored the priorities of our community. And we really pride ourselves on that. So not just arts, um, per se, which is a lot of what we hear about and, and we are very proud of, but our, our low student to teacher ratio. Um, we've, we've worked really hard because that, that is a priority for this community. And, and things like that. So that, that really does play a big part in the quality of, of the education and what we have to offer. Um, so I, I look forward again to working closely with you. The rest of the, the board does collaboratively. Um, and I hope that we all can, um, continue to support our students in Charlottesville. So thank you for your time. And if anybody else has questions, please.
Thank you very much for everything. I wasn't trying, I just, I was trying to wrap my head around what we might be expected the next couple of years. And to think long, in this longevity of, you know, the impact of COVID on our budget is going to be impacting the next couple of years. And just trying to balance that and trying to think forward what commitments we will have to maintain. Um, so it's, it's a lot right now. And I know you all know this because you're going through it too. And I know.
Yes, ma'am. We appreciate all your work as well.
And obviously we're just in a time where the needs are only growing. Um, and unfortunately our revenues are not, but they're doing the opposite. And so I just, it's just, it's very frustrating. Um, and it's, it's where we are, but as a parent of three kids, two of whom are in, one more who will be coming through the system, like this has got to be our priority, um, in our community. Um, at the same time, the needs are, are increasing given that the circumstances that we're in, um, around the globe. Um, but again, just the shortfalls that we're, we're facing and, um, we're fortunate that there are some dollars available, uh, to save for CARES because if we didn't have those funds, I mean, where would that leave us right now? It's just, I can't even imagine putting that, I have a head around that. So, um, certainly look towards further collaboration in the, in the weeks ahead, um, and the years ahead. Not for me, but for some people.
Mayor, I know that we, um, had talked about, or it looked like on the agenda, there was, um, mention of some time for public comment. Are we ready to do that now? Or does anybody else have any questions?
Counselors, any? Okay. Yes, Mr. Will.
Good evening. I'm Brian Wheeler, the city's director of communications. If you're in the audience on the Zoom webinar and you'd like to address council or the school board, please click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. If you're on via telephone, you can press star nine. And I'll call on people in the order in which they raise their hands. Each person will have up to three minutes. We have a timer on the screen. And when you join, please let us know your place of residence. First up is, uh, Kale Jaffe. Kale, can you hear us?
Uh, yes. Can you all hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
Great. Thank you. So my name is Kale Jaffe. I'm a live in Charlottesville city. I'm the parent of two Charlottesville high school students. I was happy to hear so much discussion on, in the budget about support for COVID supplies. That's important. But the funding needs to be accompanied by a commitment to get students who are struggling back into school building this year. And we need a commitment on a plan that will guarantee in-person learning for all grades beginning on day one of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Um, as a parent who has seen how much my own kids have lost in academics, in extracurriculars, in social well-being, uh, staying online next academic year just isn't acceptable. Um, and obviously for kids who are really struggling, getting them back into the classroom this semester, that's essential. I know Mr. Snook talked about, I'm asked about enrollment numbers, uh, that were data is, uh, that were down two hundred and fifty-eight students. Let me come back to that and say that anecdotally, I'm hearing from a lot of families that are choosing to go to private schools and stay there and they're not coming back. Um, I know of two area private schools who've told their families, they've got a really long waitlist, uh, for families for next year. More students are looking to leave. Uh, one of those schools reportedly was saying that if one student doesn't want to re-enroll, they've got five students ready to fill that spot in an instant. Uh, so I worry the drop enrollment is going to get worse unless we communicate to families right now that next year's going to be in person. We're putting the plan together to do that and we begin developing that plan to do that. Let me say that we can make that commitment to be in person next year for three reasons. First, the latest data from the CDC is really encouraging. Uh, CDC researchers published, uh, in the Journal of the American Medical Association just this month. Quote, "The preponderance of available evidence from the fall school semester in schools that held in-person classes has been reassuring. There's been little evidence that schools have contributed meaningfully to increased community transmission." Second, of course, is, is you all know well, and you've talked about the, the harm caused, uh, to students from an online-only education. Uh, the data on the, it is really heartbreaking. And you all know that. And third, and finally, I'm thrilled to see that our, our teachers and our staff are now getting vaccinated as frontline workers. Um, I think that is great and essential. And to make the most of that, we need to, to companion that with getting kids back in, in school. Um, it's hard to imagine that we could in good conscience not take advantage of the vaccine to left to get our kids back in school. Uh, when other frontline workers are, are not yet getting those vaccines. So thank you so much for all you're doing. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Next up is, uh, Jordan Johnson. Jordan, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
All right. You've got three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Jordan Johnson. I'm the city's schoolyard garden program director with Cultivate Charlottesville and oversee the Healthy School Meals Initiative. Uh, the five-year plan that is the collaboration with CCS Nutrition Department and one of the core initiatives of the city and the Food Justice Network's Food Equity Initiative. Um, we've been working for ten years to increase students' exposure and understanding to, of the role that food and food systems have in their lives. And, um, we've collaborated with CCS Nutrition to implement initiatives in the cafeteria to help us build capacity for the nutrition department to invest in fresh, healthy meals. Students have led this action, uh, but they can't do it alone. We're all here today to, uh, make a call for the city of Charlottesville and CCS to make a commitment to equity and the health of the students in CCS. Uh, we have some first-time city council meeting attendees with us who are students at CCS from third to 10th grade, and, uh, they've joined the public comment and will be sharing why it's important to prioritize these needs. When a school nutrition department is required to make its budget for meal sales at two seventy-five, as it is in the high school, it forces the nutrition department to think like a business. Keep expenses low to cover food and overhead for the, from that two seventy-five. This is a problem when over half of the students at CCS are eligible for free introduced meals. It forces the school to prioritize cheap, quick foods for the low wealth students who, if receiving breakfast and lunch daily, will be receiving half of their nutrition from the school district during the school year. The nutrition department is not a business and it can't function like a business. It's important to recognize that this approach is not unique to Charlottesville, that it plays out over and over and over across the country, but we need to do better. Students have asked us to do better and students deserve better. We need to invest in students' health, prioritizing support for the low wealth families who are dependent on the school meals to fuel their children. We need school administration and the Charlottesville city to say, yes, we prioritize and want to invest in equity in the s- health of our children in our schools. We need you to say, we recognize the impact that school nutrition has on students' education, on students' behavior and on students' mental health. We need you to say, we recognize that we have the power to change how school foods impact our youth. The Food Justice interns, the Cultivate team and the Food Justice Network and many partners are asking the city to fully fund the current CCS requests and to add funds that will go directly to the school district, not to any nonprofit partners. These funds can be used to build more equitable wages into the nutrition department and, uh, provide a boost of fresh food resources while CCS, uh, increases enrollment. Thank you.
Thank you. We have, uh, five additional hands raised right now. If you'd like to get in line, just click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. Next up is Beth Ike. Beth, can you hear us?
I can. Thank you, Mr. Wheeler.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, my name is Beth Ike. I live at eight oh-two Saint Clair Avenue. First, I was excited to hear reconfiguration included in this discussion. Thank you so much for keeping this moving forward. I think for me, moving fifth grade back to elementary makes so much sense, both from a pedagogical perspective as well as a childhood development perspective, and it's something that um, has been waited for, for I think as long as thirteen years, maybe longer. So the more we can keep that in the forefront, that, the better. Second and third, related to this budget that was presented, first, the salary increase for admin staff. I'm curious what the scope of admin staff is. I would hope that perhaps staff making over two hundred thousand dollars a year would not be included at this time. Uh, when I think about equity, it feels like the four thousand dollars that two percent represents might be better spent elsewhere. And lastly, um, just the line, specific line about adding the IAs back to second grade. I'm wondering if, and this was brought up at the school board meeting by someone else, but I just wanted to reiterate it. I'd love to see a focus on more direct instruction. Um, my second grader is desperately missing Spanish, something I was surprised to find, but she still talks about how much she misses Spanish. Um, and it feels like that might be a better direction than adding the IAs back in. Thank you all so much for your service, both school board and city council and everyone else helping to support all of these efforts. We really appreciate your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Aina Hidiat, but it, um, I need to point out she's got an older version of Zoom. Um, I'm going to try promoting her to be a panelist and see if that works. All right. All right, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead. You've got three minutes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Anna Hadai. I'm in the 10th grade and I go to Charlottesville High School. I'm a vegetarian and I eat the school lunches sometimes. When I eat the school lunch, I feel like there aren't many options for me. They have everything for other people, but there aren't options for me as a vegetarian. Most of the time, there are only salads and you have to arrive early to get them. When there isn't a vegetarian option, I won't eat lunch. If I think ahead of time, I pack a snack for lunch. Other times, I ask my friends, during the pandemic, I haven't been able to eat the school lunches because the only vegetarian options are the peanut butter and jelly. Some changes I would like to see are more options at lunch for people like me. This summer, I was a youth food justice intern with Cultivate Charlottesville. This summer was an amazing time to learn from my peers and also the community food justice advocates who stand in support of us today. What we've learned together has motivated us to take a stand as one as we urge the school board to consider school meals as an equity issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, we have three additional hands raised right now. Next up is Rosie Purie. And please correct me if I mispronounced your name. You've also been promoted to a panelist. Can you hear us?
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Rosie. Can you hear us? I see your mic is unmuted.
Sorry, my bad. But that's the only one that comes to mind, which I guess isn't a good thing. If I only can remember one meal, there's, sorry, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. We can hear you. You just need to speak up a little bit.
Okay. There should be more good things I should, I remember about them than that. During the pandemic, I haven't been able to get the meals because I don't, I don't know where the lunch stop is or the time arrives. But one of my friends goes to the bus stop to receive meals. They say that it's not enough for one person. But this isn't, this problem didn't start during the pandemic. It's been going on before this. One in seven kids face issue with getting good meals in Charlottesville City Schools every day. This is the reason why we came up with the suggestion for the meal program. Like if there were more options for salad box, we would really, we would really like more choices. Also, more fresh vegetables and fruit would be amazing. When the food is freshly washed and cleaned, we really like, we really feel like you care. When we see pizza reheated from a couple of days ago, we don't feel like you care. You can show us you care by making a better meal program, please, from the national, oh, my bad. I'm so sorry. Please, from the. Nutrition department. I'm so sorry.
Thank you. It looks like she disconnected there.
Rosie, you did a great job.
Thank you.
And next up is Hallie Goot, who's also been promoted to a panelist. Hallie, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Hallie Goot and I'm in ninth grade at CHS. I don't eat the school lunches now, but I used to every day until I got to Walker, then I stopped. For me, the meals changed in portion size and they just weren't as good at meeting my needs. So I started packing my lunch. I come from a family that can do this every day, but I understand that this isn't something every kid has the option for. As a student in the Charlottesville City Schools, I spent a lot of time in this garden like other kids. This summer, I was in the Cultivate Charlottesville internship program where I got to hear more about other kids' experiences and share some of my own. We talked about why this is not fair and ends up being a matter of justice. For example, when people don't have enough time or food to eat, it's hard to pay attention. Focus can be lost and this can be distracting from schoolwork. Some kids end up getting in trouble or facing disciplinary consequences because of this. And it's not all their fault when they didn't get enough to eat. It's important that we dedicate more resources to our nutrition department so we can make the changes we want to see. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We have one additional hand raised. If you'd like to get in line, just click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. Next up is Tamara Wright. Tamara, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you. And I'm sharing my time with my daughter.
Hi, my name is Jaylen Lovely Brown. I am a third grader at Clark Elementary School. I am here today to better our school meal program. Since the pandemic, I have had to start learning from home. I was diagnosed with ulcerative colitis in July. Healthy foods are needed in order to maintain remission. This also means I have to get school breakfast and lunch delivered to my home. I live in Friendship Court. And a couple of times a week, the bus will pull up with meals. My mom would go to pick up some meals for me and my siblings. Sometimes the meals are good, like the time they made us calzones. Other times, the meals aren't so good. When the meals come and they aren't hot anymore or the food has gotten soggy, my mom will get creative and cook up something better with the meal. I'm lucky to have a mother who can work from home. With us during the pandemic, but not every child, kid has this. And even before the pandemic, I didn't have my mom in school to magically change my meal to something good during the day. So when this happens during school, I may skip the meal and only. Eat snacks that day. I believe in our school can do better and ask that they. School board better invest in our school nutrition department. They need more supportive support to give us the good meals we need to grow healthy and smart in school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll pause here and just see if anyone else would like to raise their hand. And we have, Tamara is back. She had about a minute left. Tamara, did you want to continue?
If it's okay, I would just like to be back. Tamara Wright, Charlottesville, Virginia. I also work with Cultivate Charlottesville. I have three children within a Charlottesville school systems, and we have seen a huge change in the meals. We would definitely like to see an increase. We spoke on this before through our community advocates program. With, excuse me, the Food Justice Network. And we know that it's extremely important for our children to have a healthy nutritious meal in order to function throughout the day. I have one child who was diagnosed with ulcerative colitis, and I have another child who falls under the autism spectrum. So we qualify for free and reduced lunches. So if my children are only getting those foods for breakfast and for lunch, and they're not as nutritious or as tasty as they should be. That's two meals out of the day that they're getting through the school system that they may not eat, or they may only eat part of it. So they're not fully getting the nutrients that they need. Luckily, we're in a position to be able to supplement, but a lot of families aren't. So I would like to be able to advocate for those families as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Madam Mayor, I don't see any additional hands.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Counselors, do you have any additional questions or comments for Dr. Atkins or the school board? All right.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. Board members, do you have any comments, questions?
Well, I would just like to say thank you to. The counselors for the support that you have given us for the very thoughtful questions that you put to us. I think we're all in this together. I think as Ms. Torres said, this is about our whole community and we're on the same team. And you know, we're all dealing with these very difficult, unprecedented times. And anyway, I look forward to further conversations and answering any other questions that you might have. But thank you for all the support that you have given us. And I know that you will give us. Thank you.
I had one quick question for just the school board. Because we were talking about the $100,000 that was requested, the confusion about what it would particularly be for. Can we invite the Cultivate Charlottesville folks to an upcoming board meeting so that they could provide specifics to us and to the public as well?
Duly noted. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would like to say thank you to all of the council members and the board members for the meeting this evening. Mayor Walker, thank you for your insight in helping us last year move forward. With our internet connection for families throughout the city of Charlottesville. And that has helped more families than you know. And the reason I say families is because not only did it help the students. It helped the adults living in the family. And all of us have a lot to do. And all of us have taken on these positions because we had a passion for it. But so often, we forget the little things, and the little things are a thank you. And so you went into your wheelhouse, not only to help people that you knew, but to help all of the children and all of the families in the city of Charlottesville. And I want to say personally, thank you for doing that. As Dr. Atkins said earlier, when Mr. Payne asked her a question, we were talking about the opportunity gap. And the achievement gap. Well, I want to say thank you to the students that spoke tonight. Because they had a concern. The things that they wrote, they wrote. And they used their words and they spoke on their behalf. And to advocate as a child for yourself is very important. And it shows us that whether we have achievement gaps or opportunity gaps. Our students in the city of Charlottesville are able to rise to the occasion. And tonight, any of you that were listening, heard these students rise to their occasion. And what you need to know is that the school board and the city council, young people of CCS. Are going to work to address your issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to say thanks to my fellow board members and city counselors. For all of us doing all the hard work. And during this pandemic, in hopes that trying to ensure that our children and those folks in the community who are supportive of our schools. Have the best. The Justice Nutrition folks, I was very impressed with all the children who spoke tonight. From the heart in regards to nutrition and meals. The mother who spoke from the heart. That's very important, that people need to hear and hear from our children. We are the children, as a song that I used to teach. So as we're moving forward with this budget for this year and in future years. Thank you all for us working together as one to ensure that our children in the Charlottesville City Schools not only have a quality education. But that we are working toward one goal, and that's the success of all of our children. Regardless of what side of the tracks they come from. We're here to ensure that every child in the Charlottesville City Schools have a fair shake. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Right.
Okay.
You want to call it?
Yeah. So I adjourned this meeting for the Charlottesville City Council. All five members of council are present at this time and have been for the entire meeting.
And I will adjourn the meeting for Charlottesville City School Board.
Thank you, and everyone remains safe.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Good night.
Bye-bye.
Night.
Good night, everybody.